Um, volunteer fire department is the place to be. Uh, special designated license, country kitchen, and circle of light fundraiser at the art center. On November sixteenth of twenty twenty four. And then for Wild's Bar and Grill for wedding reception at the Dawes County Fairgrounds on September twentieth of twenty twenty five. We have a new record for advanced planning. So, could we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, um, introduction of new employees, uh. First was a full-time assistant librarian.
Cover the position of assistant librarian of level one, and we are really pleased to have her.
Okay, would you like to tell us something about yourself?
Hi, my name's Renee Redfern. I was born and raised here in Shadron. My family owns and operates a ranch just here in Shadron. I have done all my schooling here from kindergarten to college. And I am currently pursuing my master's degree in business with a focus in accounting.
There you go. Yeah, you, yeah, I don't know what you're doing in the library. You need to come talk to me. It's, it's a lot more, um, it's better.
Your aunt, your aunt is following in her footsteps, I guess.
We'll see.
Hope you enjoy it.
Okay, yeah.
Regular patrons of the library, so looking forward to seeing you there.
Thank you.
Okay, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, introduction, introduction of a full-time accounting clerk, um. I, I guess you're on your own, huh? No, okay, Bev to the rescue.
My name's Kelsey Schaefer. Um, I started clock late, late September. Um, I have a bachelor's in accounting I finished last year. Um, and I'm very happy to be in this position right now.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's going.
It's going well.
Yeah. Okay, um, we have a couple of introductions, uh, by the transportation department.
Good evening.
Take over.
Okay, just like last year with our other transit drivers, I like to have names for our drivers. We kind of have fun with it. So, the first one that I'm gonna do is Greg. So, we got Greg Deaton, AKA Andy Mayberry RFD. And Greg has been with the city transit for a month and is assigned to transporting school kids. On Greg's first day, his trainer immediately put him behind the wheel to drive. This is unheard of, but I thought, let's see what happens, knowing Greg also drives the buses for Job Corps. As they say, jump in with both feet, he held his own. Greg is a retired police officer from Georgia and has experience with a variety of people and situations. Greg is a talker with a strong southern drawl who can get information on a writer real quick. This is Greg. My next one is Bob Sorensen. And Bob's been here a couple of weeks. In fact, today he got sent up to Rapid City to take an individual to the airport at last minute. So, Bob is our newest reserve driver who has been with us for two weeks. Bob didn't know when he hired on that he would be taking on the task of transporting kids to school with the crack of dawn. Believe it or not, this position is rewarding, knowing and seeing you are helping a child out for their future. He's AKA Jed Clumpett. Jed Clumpett? Um, and I'll reintroduce Wayne. I got my crew here except for Cheryl. So, Wayne was named the greeter about a year or so ago. So, this is Wayne here. And he, um, drives our routes Monday, Tuesday, and half of Wednesday. Does the demand route throughout the, um, the city. Thank you, Wayne. Let me ask Gary. Gary was unfortunate, fell on the ice about a year ago, but he is getting better. I'm pretty sure that Kane's gonna leave. So, Gary, we call him the smooth talker. And he has basically been promoted to dispatcher, so he dispatches the calls for me so I can get my reports and all done, um, to the state and whatnot. He's a great asset to that. As needed, though, he'll fill in for different routes, like, um, two of the guys will be going to training this week, so Gary will actually be out there driving the school kids and wherever we need him. So, Gary. And then Cheryl Chambers did not make it tonight, but she used to be called the queen of transit. But she doesn't know this yet, but I promoted her to the Pink Panther. Cause we lost Inspector Clouseau about a year ago, so we need to get our, uh, Pink Panther back to tell us what's going on behind the corners. Cause she's always lurking around the corners of the buildings, so. That's my transit group, and they are a great group to work for us, and it's amazing. They're doing hard work for, for our community, and hopefully we're gonna see this grow and grow and grow. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Julie.
I've talked to many people. They're very thankful for having the transit program in Shadron.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I know Shane, Shane and I, relatives both utilized it.
Yeah.
The parents, yeah.
Yep.
Your dad has a lot of stories that he tells.
Oh, I'm sure he does.
He always asks for Cheryl, asks to have Cheryl. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of you want to say anything before, to the general public?
I need to hurry, get home before my wife thinks I have a girlfriend.
Very good. Thanks for your work. Okay, move on to item F for Deb Cotier.
Good evening, Council Deb Cotier. I live at four two eight North Shadron Avenue here in Shadron. And I'm the executive director for the Northwest Nebraska Development Corporation. Um, you had a written report in your packets, and I alluded to, um, perhaps sharing some of the information that we received from our, um, strategic planning process with the Golden Shovel Agency. Um, we did have an hour-long information unload, dump, if you want to call it that, onto board members that were able to attend, um, on Thursday. And I think they're still trying to absorb that and get through the eighty-some page report that, um, draft report that they have sent to us. But I did want to share with you a couple of things that, um, Bethany Quinn, who is the, um, VP that actually is leading our, um, project, shared with us in a, a, a presentation that she made, trying to hit some of the high spots of, of what's included in the, uh, marketing blueprint. First of all, I think the project goals are pretty important to keep in mind. Um, we, uh, ultimately, between Carrie and myself and the folks at, um, Golden Shovel, as well as the conversations they had with, with board members, survey results from, um, an online survey that was taken, um, the, the project goals, as they were stated, were to create awareness for Dawes County, create jobs and stimulate economic growth through business creation, business expansion, and business attraction, to identify top recruiting opportu- opportunities and narrow down target industries, to speak directly to the target industry representatives using messages that resonate, increase tourism to Dawes County, and attract developers and investors to Dawes County. And, and that's just a really broad, um, high-level look at some of the things that they saw as, as potential goals for us to be looking toward. And then I thought I might mention to the, to, to you, the, um, after the stakeholder engagement, which was the interviews that I alluded to, and then the survey that was taken, um, they identified some key themes that will be kind of woven into, uh, this, um, blueprint, as they call it. One is that Dawes County has the potential to be, become a popular tourist destination. Two, that people want to live in Dawes County. Um, number three, Dawes County has strong potential to retain a young workforce. Number four, the open frontier creative district can become a spark to attract tourism and cultivate new businesses. Number five, Dawes County is a hub. And number six, Dawes County is an ideal place for entrepreneurs. Now, those of you that have lived here a long time probably knew all that anyway. Um, most of, of what we talk about in terms of quality of life is in, is, um, included in those statements. But it's really sometimes helpful to have someone else go through a process and literally write down, uh, those things that we pretty much all know already. But now we have the beginnings of at least some direction for a plan. So, over the next, um, couple of weeks, the board will have the opportunity, and some of Carrie's board that participated in the, um, interview process, to have the opportunity to go through that plan at their leisure and literally mark things that they think are, are good, or we ought to expand more, or something that is completely, um, not in their realm of, of thinking that should, we should be doing. All of those opportunities will, uh, be made, I think, until the seventh of, seventh of November? Oh, yeah, okay. So, like thirty-first or first of November, um, and they've had it since last Thursday. I emailed a copy of this, or at least a link to a copy of this report. Uh, like I said, it's fairly lengthy. There's quite a bit of information in there that relates to actual social media strategies. And I, I admit, right off the get-go, that's like, a lot of that's above my head in terms of how TikTok could be of help to us, um, how much money you need to be putting aside to try to, um, move the needle on some of this stuff. And, and so there will be some additional discussion about maybe some priorities within the list of essentially, um, priority things that they think we should be considering, or that are, are doable things that we can accomplish. So, there are some things that we can do immediately. There are some things that will cost some additional money. And there are some things that the board would have to determine that that, that they want, um, either the staff may to be spending time on, or for us to figure out a way to accomplish, whether it's just amongst the board numbers, or that we look to, um, create a, a way to pay someone to do some of these things. Because anytime you take on a, a plan of this magnitude, there are gonna be a lot of, a lot of wish we could's, and a lot of things that, um, would be great if we could. But we do have to, to look at it with the eye of what we can, A, accomplish, and B, um, what, what we can finance, frankly, afford. So, um, there's still more to come on that, and I did not bring a copy for all of you because we're still sort of in a phase where we're fine-tuning it a little bit, and I, I really didn't want to get ahead of ourselves and make it be, you know, available to the entire public before we have a final product. Cause we'd like to have some, sort of a, um, an opportunity to celebrate, um, the finished product and, and present it at, at some point in the future, so. That will be, um, certainly, uh, weeks now instead of months from now, so, um, I hope if there's anything that, that I've mentioned or that you've thought about, you want to know more about, uh, please don't hesitate to call me. George was able to be there, so he could also maybe, um, give impressions if someone had specific questions in terms of, um.
I have not opened up that big document yet.
Ah, okay.
I, I, for some reason, I think my tax clients are more important than that.
Well, that's, that's understandable. But I'm excited about, um, some of the ideas. I'm excited about just really having, um, something a little more tangible than a strategic plan that generally you do and you stick on the shelf and maybe you don't look at it again. Uh, this is, this is literally a month-long, um, list of things you can do once a week for a year, or once a month for a year. Um, specific things, specific types of, of outreach that you can do, and, and public relations that we can do. Again, some of this is not gonna cost us a nickel, so there are things we can do, um, pretty quickly. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Very good. Thanks, Deb. Okay. Item G on the agenda, a resolution to authorize the Creative District grant application to be submitted in Nebraska Arts Council, and Carrie Remp is here to.
Hi, y'all. Carrie Remp, Discover Northwest Nebraska Director, seven oh six West Third Street. So, this is our development grant that we are eligible to apply for through the Arts Council, now that the Creative District has received official designation. We can apply for up to a hundred thousand dollars, so that is what we are asking for. Um, they have several different categories under which you can apply for that, and you can choose one or more of those categories. So, we are, um, doing several different requests. We are doing, um, fo- six thousand dollars in operational funding for Shadron Open Art. We are doing five thousand in, it's construction funding, but it's renovation and rehab work on the Shadron Art Center. Uh, we are doing a request for fifteen hundred dollars for the library to do some additional programming through the library. And then the bulk of the grant request is eighty-seven thousand five hundred for a portable, non-permanent stage, um, that what can be used for things like Fur Trade Days, Bands on Bordeaux, Slim Days Reloaded, which was just here over the weekend, Harvest Moon Festival needs a stage for their performances, things like that. So, um, these are all tied to the goals in the strategic plan that was created, um, to improve our indoor and outdoor spaces, to offer enhanced programming, and to support Shadron Open Art in getting that artisan community cooperative space up and going. So, those are the requests. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, Carrie, now, this is somewhere in there, and this, all this cash match.
Mm-hmm.
That's not, you, you're not expecting anything from the city?
No. In fact, for this grant, you actually do not have to have any cash match at all. There's none required. Um, but if you have cash match from your entities, then you get a few extra bonus points, probably. Um, and so each of these different entities, obviously, the library, um, will be working through their budget, um, to do some in-kind donations with Lucinda Mays and their budget to purchase books and things. Um, the Fur Trade Days request has cash on hand, and they have a capital campaign project planned if we receive this grant. Um, Open Art has their own cash match, um, on hand for their piece of it, and so does the Art Center. So, nothing comes from the city general fund at all.
And, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't know if I have that with me. I think it's twenty by twenty-four. Yeah, they, we looked at the bigger one, but it's like two and a half times the cost, plus it requires a semi to pull, so. Um, yes, I believe so, yeah. Yeah, and all hydraulic, and it can be pulled by a regular pickup, so that is what we felt would be most useful for our community. All self-contained, yes. Yep, it opens up, yep. So, so that is the request. Um, it is due November first. Um, we'll go, Katie will put it through the city's portal application, or portal on Arts Council site, and then we will get notified in February, it sounds like, on whether or not we receive any funding. And they can pick and choose, you know, they might say, well, we'll give you money for these two things, but not this, or, you know, whatever, so we'll see what we get. But you don't know unless you apply, so.
One of the council, you, you go ahead.
I'll introduce resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eighty-four, and we for its adoption.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Joe, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-four. We've had our discussion, I believe, so we have roll call.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next on the agenda is, um, resolution to approve a final plat. Someone want to make that?
Oh, uh, I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-five, for its adoption.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe, to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-five, to approve the final plat for lot one zero one, block one, northeast second subdivision, a replat of lot four and part of lot two, block one, northeast second subdivision to the city of Shadron, Dawes County, Nebraska, uh, on East Nydubera Street in the city of Shadron. So, uh, Jake, you, you have any comments to give us?
Nope, I think we finally got it all ironed out. Looks like a good plot, works for everybody. You can see there in the corner when you're looking at the plot, lot one oh one, egressing, ingress, everything like that, so it doesn't landlot anybody out. Uh, business with the city, everything can still move forward, so we're just gonna develop a piece of land that has had choke cherries on it for thirty years, so. Put it to good use. So, I appreciate you guys putting that forward, and like I said, we got this all done by Don Brush, and he did a good job.
Anyone have any questions, Jake?
This is just, um, this is just a plat.
This is just a plat. Okay, if not, we have roll call, please.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, um, information that we received tonight, um, is a lease, uh, lease agreement between the city of Shadron and Solid Waste Agency in Northwest Nebraska, otherwise known as Swan, for the purpose of Swan to use city property, construction, and operate a baler and an office area. I took about ten minutes, um, before the meeting and, um, reviewed what I could in that time. I, um, asked our city attorney, Adam Edman, and he, he worked with Amy Pockess on getting this going, and he feels comfortable with it, so.
Between Janet and Tom, and Adam and Amy and myself, yeah, I mean, it took some work. We just had some maneuvering we had to do, a couple of check-offs, um, assignments, term agreements, egress, ingress, impound lot, attachment A, um, and what we were gonna do for purposes of that lot, so. It took some things, but I think everybody feels very comfortable, so that everybody's protected, so that we can move forward, and keep hauling solid waste for you.
Was there, was there a question on the impound lot, or?
Well, we've got it in here at twenty-five by sixty. There's been some question later that.
Yep.
It's size.
Yep.
But we also, I think there's a workaround. Jake was looking at the amount of fence, where we'll put it. We have some fence, we might be able to figure that out.
And the biggest thing is just talking like John Paul and stuff like that, is we got, we gotta make something that you can get a tow truck in and out, and maneuver around six or seven other vehicles if there happens to be. Um, law enforcement needs to be able to get into a gate, get to the right vehicle, so there's just some, there's some maneuvering, like right now, you just go through a gate, and you're in a confined space, but they've got all sorts of room to work around. Once we do an impound lot, which is more secure for law enforcement, which is a key component to this, is just making sure stuff is locked, so we don't have people crawling back in there to get stuff that may be hidden and not found at the time of arrest, so, you know.
The theory that we're, the proposed area to put is, is out of Jake's way. We'll build some fence, it'll be secure, and it's more accessible ultimately, so I th- I think we'll be all right with that.
Yep, yep. You guys have any other questions, any concerns? Um, attachment A, I want to make sure you guys had that, so you understand. Um, city of Shadron really comes out ahead when it comes to Swan, and it's just the vicinity, you know, Shadron had the baler, um, had the dumpsters, had everything that we needed. Um, we were the close agency to the building of the landfill fourteen and a half miles north. So, Shadron really reaps a lot of benefits, um, for Swan, and being able to be this close to the transfer station. So, there's a lot of, lot of key components, um, that I think your constituents would really find interesting on how we can help each other out.
So, did any of the other communities that you service, uh, benefit such as like picking up from parks?
Absolutely. Yep, all, all the same, all the same applies when it goes to the cities, anything like that. Um, counties help out. So, when we got these community sites, which you get into Gordon, it's a mile south, um, that's owned by city of Gordon, okay? So, when we get into trouble or need to bush, brush pit picked up, we have a loader here, but we don't have one at any community sites. So, the city automatically goes out there, helps us push that up, helps us push up the concrete pile, metal pile, whatever it may be. So, same with the county, it's the same kind of agreement. Courthouse doesn't get charged for their dumpster in lieu of that payment. Over in Crawford, we've used this before, we needed some help. They went out there with a dozer at one time, and it was a big mess. We usually a loader once, maybe twice a year, and helped to push that stuff up, so.
This is helping each other.
It's helping each other, yep, and that's what an interlocal agreement is supposed to do, and that's why the state loves them.
So, want to make, want to make a motion to go ahead to prepare a resolution?
Yeah, I'll ma- I'll make a motion, uh, go ahead and, uh, move forward with this.
You can just make a motion to approve the lease?
Yeah.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe to approve the, the lease. Uh, can we have roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Thank you, Jake.
Hey, thank you very, very much. I really appreciate it. Adam, thank you for everything. Tom, appreciate it, so, right, thank you, guys.
Okay, somebody would like to introduce?
I'll introduce, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-six.
And I will second that.
Okay. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-six introduced by Mark, seconded by Joe, uh, related for the specifications for a new twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five half-ton crew cab, four-wheel-drive pickup truck. And we have Scott Shammer here to tell us some things about it.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Uh, this pickup will be replacing, uh, two thousand thirteen extended cab pickup that they currently use at the airport. Uh, this is spec'd out kind of like, uh, the last pickup we bought for the Parks Department. It's got the smaller engine in it. And the reason why we went with the, the crew cab pickup is, we keep a lot of stuff inside of it. Uh, we went, especially out there, uh, where we have to do a lot of spot stuff, like we have to keep the weeds off the runway. We went to an electric weed eater, electric blower, battery powered stuff, so I like to keep it inside, not in the back of the pickup, cause if it gets wet, it just, I mean, they're same price as gas-powered, so we want to try to keep it nicer. We keep a braking action machine inside there. Uh, it's, it sits inside the pickup, it's in there, it'll, right now, uh, we spend around, I think it was around fourteen thousand dollars for that machine. Every time a plane asks for a question, and when we're out there, we can go out and give them a braking action on all the runways. Uh, that pickup travels back and forth, that's why it's spec'd the way the last one is, cause the last pickup we received was, is pretty impressive. Uh, we are right under five thousand miles on the twenty twenty-four pickup that we purchased this year, and I've put twelve tanks of gas in that pickup, and it's been to Lincoln and back, and Casper and back twice. So, that's the kind of bang you're getting for the buck with that kind of vehicle. My first pickup, I know, we replaced when I took over superintendent in two thousand and three, used about a tank of gas a week with that big engine in it. So, I mean, we are getting better, so that was the plan on this one. This pickup will go out of town every day. You don't realize it, but it's five miles to the airport, so that's thirty miles on that pickup. You don't realize it, but it's five miles to the airport, so that's thirty miles on that pickup every single day, just going in and out. Not, including the runway inspection that's done every day. So that's, that's the reasoning for the, the type of pickup, the size of pickup, uh we'll also take, you know. Two pickups out when we go, but sometimes there's three in one pickup and two in the other, just depends on how we get out there. Sometimes we take everybody in one pickup and one person comes, comes and goes, but very rarely, I mean every pickup's different, we have. And the airport only has one vehicle and the parks department has the rest, and every one of them is different, we have a three quarter ton single cab pickup, we have a half ton single cam pickup. We have two crew cab pickups, uh we have one two wheel drive, single cab. Uh, then we have the, the dump truck, so every, every vehicle's specked differently for different reasons, so that's why we have this one specked the way it is though. The what, well, the one we have now has been really impressive, like I said, I, I, I couldn't complain about that if I had to. And this one is designed for, for doing that, I mean we had a, a Tahoe before we, and it was falling apart, we had to buy it used. And this was the, the pickup we have now was a, a hand me down from, from another department. Uh, we did put in the budget to take that pickup and transfer it to the parks department. Cause it has a, a seven foot Meyer straight blade plow on it, so we're gonna use it in town to help us clean out with the street department, help do some of the dead ends. Some of the parking lots that we do, that we can come in, clean up some of the messes when, you know, we still have to do Wilson Park and we usually don't get that. Except with the side by side and it takes us a while to get that done with that, so we're gonna utilize that by transferring it down. And this pickup won't have a snow plow on it, because we're going to use the tool cat at the airport that we were gonna purchase a new plow for and it's been ordered. So that's gonna get us around the vehicles in the parking lot a lot easier than a, than a full sized, full box pickup would, so.
When, when we did this last year, there was some confusion. About the remote starting system, um and it wasn't on. The GM product on the work trucks, that was not a item that was standard equipment. And I, I would really suggest that we delete that, I was told that you as a city, or we as a city. Were informed during those days of hard to get, pick them up trucks, that if you included. A s- remote starting system, which you had a better chance of getting it.
Uh huh.
And the one that we ended up buying, you know, that was an add-on by one dealer, the other dealer didn't understand that they could do that. Um, so you know, and is that really used that much? I, I have it on my car and we haven't used it yet, but.
And this pickup is, you know, at two o'clock in the morning to get it started, to get it running, when we have to go on plow snow was one of the reasons why we request those. Not every vehicle needs it, no, it doesn't, you know, but it helps us get going when we have situations like that, when we're going out for emergency services. George, that's why it's in there, you know, and others, you know, specification we had in there last year too, where we had a mishap is we had a dealer that bid all the options into the pickup price. Had the options not been bid into the price, their pickup probably would've been a little bit anyway. So I, I hope it's clarified by taking that out and specifying that when we, when we deliver these.
And.
And this is a supervisor's pickup, I mean this is the pickup that Roger has and he does take it home at night.
And you definitely need. In, in the past, it's, I think the one last year specified ten ply tires versus what comes on the vehicle, which. I said, why don't you just drive them when they were out, then you buy the ten ply, but this one used to specify mud and snow tires, which.
Gotta do an inspection around the outside of the airport.
Are obviously more, more aggressive.
Six miles around that airport on mud and rock, and we do a fence inspection once a week. If you ever get stuck out there, George, I'd like you to come out and see it, that's why I'm working on it.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, yeah.
We've been, we've been adding the crushed concrete around the outside of the perimeter of the fence to help us get around and doing work with it. So I mean, we're getting better, but there's still a lot of it that we have to drive around, that you can't hardly get to. And we don't have to do a lot of repairs, but we still have to, we have critters that are trying to burrow underneath of our fence and hop through it constantly, so. Even with the dig defense, the prairie dogs have figured out how deep it is.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Basically, there's a reason for every specification.
They're not all the same.
Yeah.
This one just happens to be the same, cause we're gonna use it, just like I said, it's gonna have a lot of miles on it. And we're trying to get the best thing we can, plus it's, it's a pickup for, used for work that we can get stuff inside in and just still have the box on the outside. The Tahoe was horrible, we broke the back window of the Tahoe twice. I mean, it was a horrible choice of a airport inspection vehicle and it got roached on the inside and. So that's, yeah, this is the reason for this, and the next one for our department will be different.
This, this, this was in your budget too.
Uh huh, it's, it's all budgeted, yeah, this is the co-departments, we all put it into the fund, there's actually enough money in there, there'll be another pickup coming too. Uh, just a little more prep than, than the other superintendent, he's a little younger, not ready yet, so. But he'll, you'll see another one coming out of this year's budget also, that you've seen when we, we approved that.
Will be on the next, on the next.
Yep.
And the other thing too is God felt to remember, or remind you everybody is we're, we're gonna get rid of the two thousand six.
Correct.
Chevy pickup too, so.
It's been already surplus.
It is a replacement, it is gonna be a surplus unit out, so we are trying to upgrade our pieces of equipment so that we.
And that's one of the vehicles that we purchased used.
Minimize our maintenance cost and everything else.
When, when we didn't have a lot of money, we went down the other, other path that we purchased it used and. A lot of the stuff on that, you know, it was a good purchase for when we got it, I mean it, it served us what it needed to do, but. Having to transfer the, the pickup in that we can use to do work inside the parks department will help us, we don't need that extra pickup in the parks department, so we will get rid of it. And that was a good plan the city manager put forth on the auction stuff this year, the one we put on there is better than giving those things away for three or four hundred dollars at our city auction that we were doing and getting a lot of money. I know Katie does a lot of work on that and Donna prior to her did a lot of work on that, but this new program, putting that up on the, the sale site that we did, that was a plus for the city of Shatteran. I mean, those vehicles brought a lot of money and I think it's a good program, I hope we continue to do it.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, can we have a roll call please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, um, item K.
I'll introduce resolution twenty point four dash eighty-seven before its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark for resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-seven. To approve the quote, uh the John Deere five twenty-four P tier. Wheel loader in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars.
Yes, correct, good evening Council, how are you?
Good, tell us your name out there for, everybody TV land wants to know who you are.
Oh, it's me. Uh, I'm Dustin Glass, street supervisor for the city of Shatteran, and I'm here to talk about a new loader, so.
So, so explain this purchase versus a bidding process to us.
So we're gonna actually be going through Sourcewell instead of a bidding process, so it's, I guess, I don't know how they.
And would you describe Sourcewell as a company that's already bid the things or what?
Sourcewell's already bid this, it's kinda like the state bid, so it's, it's an approved method of purchasing without having to bid yourself.
Yeah. That, in, in saying that, uh the other entities, manufacturers of uh loaders that I've spoke with. Have basically not denied, but told me that it would be a lot more money for them to sell us a loader. Because of all the attachments we already currently have for a John Deere. So if we bought a new loader, we would have to either add on the whole front end of a John Deere loader onto either cat. Or a case or so on and so forth, or buy a blank for every piece of attachment we have. And then that would defeat the purpose of our interchangeability with street department, of course, airport. And always have a backup.
Makes sense.
And now the quote in our packet of information. Mentions this trade-in, but we're not going to do that.
Yeah, so the trade-in was optional and the, so even from John Deere themselves, they said that we would make more. If we sold it outright compared to what they would sell it for or what they would give us, because there's not a lot of. They're not in the, really into the business of selling old pieces of equipment, they're in the business of selling new ones, so. They don't really want something sitting on their lot, that's why they gave us, what they gave us.
The eighty-four model that's being surplus, is that one of them that we've discussed in the past was, is undersized?
Yes.
If that, okay, so if it is, is this new one specked out to be the right size for what we need it to be?
So this size of loader will be the exact same size of loader that the airport got specked out, so it'll be technically. Technically one size bigger than my new loader that I currently have, which I already have to have a count. We already had to purchase an extra counterweight in order to put the snow blower on the front of it. So yes, it, it'll be able to hold our attachments plus do more, I mean.
So we're right, we're not only also getting rid of forty seven year old piece of equipment, but we're right sizing for what we need.
Yes, yes.
And it's also gonna be right size for going down like our alleys and such, so it's not such a monstrosity that we can't use it for the areas too that's necessary.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we didn't go too big to where you can't use it.
Right.
But big enough to where we can still use our attachments without putting so much, I guess, front end weight on our O four that we currently have.
Yeah, well, that's good, a lot of our, getting rid of that.
With all that.
Yeah.
Are we going to have a picture show about it?
Yeah, I got, I, I made a picture show for you guys.
Okay, let's uh show, see the picture show.
Alright, so, bought the new loader for the street department, go ahead and grab. Then we'll be replacing, maybe, maybe. Yep, uh we'll be replacing our forty year old four forty-four C, which has six thousand six hundred and sixty-two hours on it currently right now.
That picture looks pretty nice though, Dustin.
It's very interesting.
I didn't wanna pull it out and risk it blowing up, so. Okay, next page, uh so this is a picture of Scott's at the airport, but this'll be like same basic model. And then next page. This'll be all of our current attachments that we actually own right now. So this is the snow creek that the street department currently has. And then we have the road hog, which we use quite often throughout the summer months.
Which is what?
Do what?
That's what we mill the streets with, so we'll mill, mill the streets and then tear it up, fill it back in with asphalt.
So how much is it milled off when you mill a street?
So it depends on how much asphalt's on the street, cause there's been spots where I've milled. Less than an inch and spots that I've milled six inches, it just depends on the area of Shatteran. And where you pick and choose on ripping out the road. And then next few are gonna be Scott's, so this is the CAT snow blower that's currently at the airport, but we are in the process of receiving the new blower, correct?
Should be here.
Yep. So and then the next one will be the Wassu snowbox that's out at the airport too. And then that will conclude all of our attachments we currently have right now. But I didn't conclude the bucket and the forks, I mean we already, I mean loader comes with a bucket. We already have forks, so those are the only two that I didn't attach.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, could we have a roll call please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks Dustin.
The hour being, um, six, that's a little fast.
Yes, it is.
Fifty-two, we will open a public hearing for the, six forty-seven, oh, yeah, okay, that's right. Six forty-seven, thank you. Public hearing on the one and six year street improvement plan.
Well, I'm here for the street improvement plan for the one and six. Um, I also have another picture show for you guys.
Okay.
Sure.
Maybe, well, we can go ahead and start, but the first one is. That's alright, I can go with it, so we're be reviewing the one and six year plan. Oh, there it is, that's the one, we're reviewing the one and six year plan, that's a picture of old downtown, Main Street. And our next slide will be our completed proj- project that we've done through this year. And you can't really see it on there, but I put on three R, I got the question that's asked what three R meant. So I put it on there as a little bubble, which is resurfacing, restoration, rehabilitation. Your classifications for defining a street on if it's maintenance, three R or new and reconstructive. And our next page after that will be continuation of the projects. And then our one year improvement plan. And our one year improvement plan's gonna consist of uh chip sealing the one hundred blocks to the six hundred blocks from Spruce Street to Pine Street. So it's gonna be a big, a big footprint of roads being, roads being done. That you can go ahead and go to the next one. So yeah, there, basically every single section on the map that's red, that's what'll be getting chip sealed.
And that's strictly asphalt.
Yeah, strictly asphalt, no concrete streets.
So.
In this process, and I alluded to it about that milling, so that's, that'll be in heavy use this next year.
So we'll be doing our milling separate from them.
Oh, okay.
So they'll be doing what they did on Main Street, but they'll be using a different tack product, which is RC eight hundred, which is a, a heavier rubberized tack. So and it should bond a lot thicker than what Main Street um currently has. That was just based off of. Preference, I would say.
Yes, and the chips will be down longer.
Yes, down a lot longer than what they were on Main. And they'll be fly, fly stripping the manholes, correct, is that what they said? Yeah, fly stripping the manholes, instead of just throwing rock over the top of it and driving.
And we'll be going out for bid for that come, come early s- winter.
Yep. Yep.
Or after the first of the year, depending on what our engineers are recommending for, for some of those things. So Janet, with this project, uh project, did you do a drive-through with a, a contract, is this part of it where you said some places you can get a buy with just. If you do it twice, you can get by, I'm sorry to.
No, you're okay.
I'm just wondering if this is the same.
When we um drove around with the new engineers, um we talked about either double armor coating or doing a, a mini or micro seal. Um, they did not think we would do a double armor coat. Um, and we're still in conversation with them on those two blocks over on the west portion of town. And um I'm not sure we have decided which way we're gonna go, so um.
There'll be two blocks up for, that are questionable, but.
On, on which way we're going to go and.
Yeah, but everything else will be a regular chip seal.
Right, right, right. So um depending upon how the bids come in, we're hoping to get all the way to Sixth Street. Um, from, as Dustin said, from Cedar to.
No, from Spruce to Pine.
From Spruce, Spruce to Pine.
Yep.
So that large area of town, of town, chip sealed.
Yep, and then while they're chip sealing, we'll be basically on the opposite footprint of them milling and filling. Like we did on the one and twos to prep for the chip seal for this next year. Like we did on the one and twos to prep for the chip seal for this next year.
So there's still some patching that um Dustin's crew will be doing until they can no longer.
Oh, wow.
Uh what, wh- or weather will no longer allow, and then they will still do some patching again next spring. Ahead of the chip sealing.
Yep. Lots of it, lots of it.
So it'll be, any of the potholes, all that stuff, so.
Correct.
Will will any of this like, sometimes there's. Really make ground down and stuff like that, that's.
So.
He done.
Dan from Top Coat said that a lot of our roads aren't really that bad. Which I don't, I don't know. My, I have a different point of view from it, but.
And they'll be here again next week.
Yep.
And we'll talk to them again.
Yep, so. We'll get more, pick his brain a little bit more, I'll get back with you on some more.
And and the one thing too that I'll point out with with the new engineering group that we have, we're doing a lot of the similar things as what Gearing and. And Scott's Bluff are doing down in their areas too. And so we're gonna try to do it so that when these companies are bidding out some of these processes. Mobilization's such a terrible cost as our our overall projects for any type of construction, so. With them doing some of those kinda things, we're hoping that we can match up with some of these people and. And see if we can get bigger projects which will hopefully get us bitter, better bids. On some of these things as we're going through this whole process. And chip seal is is way. Least expensive compared to total reconstruction, which when Dustin gets to his six year plan.
Yeah, we'll be there.
We'll get you some numbers here, cause I think Councilmember Graves asked us to get some numbers for you, and I apologize for not getting them in writing, but I do have them. Written down.
Okay, well, we'll go to the next page. It's one of my favorite pictures. I'm going to the next page. And this is our six year plan of spo- or scope of work, use six year plan. So, there's a lot on here and I can't. I can't bore you guys to death with, you know, how many roads need to be replaced, so I kinda combined it a lot of them together. Like the first one, East Sixth Street from Anne to Beach Street, we all know that Sixth Street from Cedar to Spruce is really bad, but from Anne. To Beach would be. The connection of Sixth Street from Main to Ridgeview, all new and reconstructive, so. And I think Tom got a number on.
Right, and that project alone right there, and this is what uh Councilmember Graves asked for, is about fifteen hundred feet that we're looking at. And what the engineers gave me for a cost, cause it was something that was asked a little late on this last week, but next year we'll try to get better numbers for you guys. He's estimating that it's gonna cost us approximately five hundred and twenty-five to six hundred and twenty-five dollars per linear foot. And so that equates out to seven hundred and ninety-three thousand that this particular project would cost. Just so the general public and the council members understand those dollars and cents that we're talking about, at least on this one. And this is one of your top three or four projects.
Yeah, this would be the top, one of the top ones, and then obviously you got your few, you know, Seventh and Bordeaux between King. Which will be doing work from Seventh to Ninth. And trying to three R basically keep them. You know. Acceptable until we get to that point of rebuilding and reconstructing them. But then when it gets to like North Main, there's, it's on there, it's sore thumb, it's a sore subject.
Yeah, and North Main right now, we did get a general estimate from the engineering group. In which, you know, obviously there's gonna be a lot of curb and gutter, there's gonna be infrastructure, water lines, storm lines, um possibility of moving some. Uh sewer lines too as well, along with some other utilities and such. The last estimate that was given, and this is approximately three thousand linear feet, and uh the estimate that he gave us was three point two million dollars right now. And so, um I know some of the projects that we're gonna be looking at for this next budget year is gonna be looking at trying to get. Our engineering, get things kinda nailed down, and then possibly going out for bids the following year. Because there's a lot of pre-work that we have to do for some of those things, so those those numbers definitely could go up. Um doubtful if they're gonna go down, but maybe they'll stay stable too, I don't know.
That's.
And this is based off of information of current projects that the the current engineering group has has been doing on. And again, that's a a basis, what he said was five twenty-five to six hundred and twenty-five per linear foot. Type projects.
Got it, okay, we'll we'll go, we'll go through my maps here. So we got Sixth and Anne, or Sixth basically Anne to Beach. And then. Seventh Street or from Bordeaux to King. We got West Sixth Street, Main to Shadrin Avenue, which that is actually a concrete block. Seven asphalt block, and I think Tom, you got, did you get numbers on the concrete block?
The concrete block again surprisingly is is about the same price per linear foot with what they've got currently right now. Um Sixth to Main to the Shadrin Avenue is about three hundred and fifty feet, a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. But that's not replacing curb though.
No, that's just panels.
And that's part of the cost with the North Main, I should specify, this is just replacing the street itself, those numbers, the five to twenty-five to six twenty-five. It's not taking out curb and gutter, infrastructure, all of those other things too. So if we're just doing the street repair, it's definitely quite a bit cheaper.
And then we'll go, the next one's gonna be Beach Street, Third to Sixth. And then West Ninth Street, Main to Shadrin Avenue. And then East Ninth Street, Main to Bordeaux, so the opposite side of Main. And all of North Main, the next few are gonna be North Main, it's gonna be broke down into two sections. And then East Second Street, King to Shelton, that's gonna be curb and gutter replacement, but we've talked about possibly. Doing something different this next following year or the year after on trying to replace curb and gutter. And then West Second Street, Morehead to Mears, that's curb and gutter as well. And then the two. Roads that aren't existent, which is Ninth Street from Centennial Drive to Pine and Cedar Beats to Royal Court. And that concludes our street city superintendent plan.
The the reason I asked about uh certain costs associated with some of the street repairs is. Before I got into the council, I didn't understand what the cost associated with doing these projects was, and I think a lot of people in the general public. Don't understand how expensive it is and why we don't have, why don't we just get the streets fixed? Well, it's cause it's very expensive. And well, why don't you just fix one street? Well, because the mobilization fee kills you, you might as well have them come in and do a bigger project. Instead of just one block here, and then next year do one block, because then you're paying before your mobilization fee time and time again, so.
Yep, correct.
So that's the only reason I I forgot for some of these numbers was.
And 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 you're exactly right, and I think using the current engineering group that we have, they should be able to help us out knowing when. Other communities are looking at some of those, cause they do work in Alliance, they do work in Gearing and Scott's Bluff and several of the other smaller communities and and hopefully we'll be able to. Piggyback or combine some of these, so these companies will have a better opportunity to spend. Up here in in less mobilizations and maybe get better deals on some of the prices too. As far as concrete and or oil or whatever else that they're doing.
And of course, these, if we have a water main break, these are, this is your wish list for six years, but if there's a water main break and you have to repair that road.
Yeah.
It then, that's what gets done instead of one of the.
So. Yeah. So yeah, it's like basically a funnel, this is how they explain it, it's, you know, when you're in superintendent class, it's a funnel, you throw all your projects in the top, right? And say something blows up out the top, that's the one you gotta do first. Even though it was, let's say it was on the back burner of your sixth, it might end up being the first thing on your first year, your one year, the next following year. It just depends on, and you gotta think, everything, other nature. Every, I mean, everything, it just, it all plays a benefactor in repairing the street.
Now, the one thing too, we will have, this information will be put on the website and it will be also on your Spark. Um forums and such too, so that council members will be able to review them on a regular basis, or. If you have constituents that are asking you guys questions, you'd be able to answer them and or send them our way.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone have any other questions? Um if not, the hour being seven oh two, I would close this public hearing. And move on to item number M.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-eight to move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Joe to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-eight. Which is to approve the one and six year street improvement plan for the city of Shadrin for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five as prepared. Any questions, comments? I think we pretty well covered it in the public hearing, so could we have a roll call please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Item number N.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine, move for its approval.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Joe to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-nine. It's to approve the annual certification of program compliance to Nebraska Board of Public Roads classifications and Standards. Um is there any? Information that we need to to know with? One of those requirements of. Submitting paperwork to the state of Nebraska. Who we get a significant amount of money from. It comes from primarily the, I think all of it comes from your fuel tax. To help our streets. If there are no questions, we have a roll call please.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety, move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Shane. For resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety to designate two additional handicap parking stalls located on the south side of Tenth Street. Toward the east of the four-way stop at Tenth and Main Street, which was a request by Shadrin State College. And at the October seventh council meeting, we made a motion to approve that, and this resolution is. Follows up on that motion. Um I would like to mention, um, cause not everyone was at the agenda meeting obviously, cause only two of us could be there. But um council member Shane Shepherd helped a little bit with. Help uh with talking to Janet and the college people and uh. Figuring out a way to lose one less parking stall in this reconfiguration.
Yeah, correct, so um upon me and Janet actually going up to inspect and see what we needed to do upon looking, Shane. Surprisingly showed up like right on time, like perfect, perfect time. Um and then after we got done talking and after um. But doing some measuring, um we would actually only lose two parking stalls if they do an eleven foot, a five foot.
Isle.
Yeah, aisle, eight foot um section, another eight foot section, five foot aisle and another eight foot section, and. We wouldn't lose technically, we wouldn't lose three, we'd only lose two, but they would have to actually. Re-stripe all of the parking that's there or the f- sections, the two extra stalls plus the two handicaps that are already currently there. So. And with that being said, on each five foot aisle, they have to have a curb cut on the sidewalk side. Within quarter to three.
What's there is a mess.
Yes.
It doesn't meet any standards, um they'll have to re-stripe every, erase everything that's there, re-stripe. And um what's happening is because they do not have any curb cuts into the sidewalk, they're pushing everybody out into the street. To get onto the sidewalk. So we're gonna be correcting a problem and doing it right.
And they get two handicap stalls.
What do they say about the group?
I.
Um when I talked to Kara Gadswick, she said draw it up, we'll do it next spring and it'll be right.
Oh.
So they're in paper.
And I got most of it done, so.
And they, you have it drawn up?
Yeah, I got most of it drawn up, yeah.
Dustin's drawing it up, we'll present it to the college and. They're gonna, I I think they'll have Mike helping do the work.
At least the striping.
At least the striping, yeah. So it's correcting a problem that's ex- existing for them, we'll erase the stripes, do it right.
Sounds good.
Yeah, but it turned out, sounds like it turned out well.
And I mean, just to, I mean, just to. Till the right stripe, we go.
Yeah.
It was amazing.
Okay. No other comments, could we have a roll call please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, item number P.
I'll add a reach resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one and move for its adoption.
Second that.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Shane for resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety-one. To approve requests for proposals for fuel and authorized notice to bidders. In reading this at um two thirty in the morning, I said, what about octane? Cause I I I know there's a lot of. People out there on the street that says, well, in this high altitude, eighty-five is. Meets are as good as eighty-seven. Myself, I've kinda shied away from that and. And go with the eighty-seven, and I don't know if this this is part of that.
Actually, it's it's not, we we didn't put any kinda octane basis in there for it, I guess we could look into it, but I I'm not sure. Um um how the council would like us to proceed with it as far as the octane because of the. Wide variety of vehicles and smaller pieces of equipment that we had, if there would be a way to do that, I'm not sure. Um but I'm I'm sure we could try to do something if if it's a concern, but I think we. Purchase the fuel based upon what the pieces of equipment is necessary to do right now. Cause I, if that's what you're asking, George.
Well, if you read the owner's manual.
Mm-hmm.
They don't ever say anything, well, but if you're in a higher altitude climate, eighty-five is just as good as eighty-seven, they never say that stuff, so. And I don't know if that's true or if that's a uh tale that somebody invented just to. Reduce the octane rating.
I'll, I use at least eighty-seven myself, so. Um but but I know in all my small motors, they say not to use ethanol.
Yeah.
So um I buy the eth- ethanol free, um high octane stuff. You play YouTube.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
So how how have we done it before? Have we gotten bids previously?
We've done, we've gone out to bids here eight, nine years ago, I suppose, maybe, maybe longer than that. And that's why it's been brought forth, is that we we feel that we need to probably go out for bid on more of a current basis on it. Um but we had not put anything like that in our previous bids, uh the bid that we have here, and Katie, you might be able to specify. Did we have anything in the octane on the previous ones?
I don't, I don't do this.
I I don't recall seeing them.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't be a bad thing.
So.
At least you're comparing apples to apples, we might be beating. One octane, we might be beating.
And and we can, we can ask them to put that in there, I think we could add that to our 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 resolution for when we go out for it.
I know I. Cause I know a couple of gas stations in town, you look at one of them, the price, it's the same price on the other side, but one is for eighty-seven, one is for eighty-five.
Okay.
That, that's exactly what I'm kinda implying that, that you might not be getting the, the same thing, cause.
Right.
Cause it's based upon pump price less whatever they.
Right.
Come up with.
And we can definitely put that in there, uh, for octane to be specified in the bid process itself.
Right.
And then that way, we're comparing apples to apples and we can actually add that in there with ethanol too, as far as that goes. If that's, is what the council wishes for us to go out for bids on something like this and, well, can we do that, Adam, with that? Okay.
So, uh, so may this encompass the, the fire department as well as a city entity?
The city, city vehicles of the fire department, yes. The county or the rural, fire trucks would still be underneath their, their part.
Twenty years ago, they used to just try to do a monthly rotation throughout the.
Right, and right now though, I think all the county rural and Scott, you might be able to tell me, I think that's that big batch right now, right?
Well, the big batch is the.
And cities at, at the pumping pantry right now, is that what you have currently?
And that was prior to Maverick coming to town, that's it, it hasn't been changed since Maverick's come to town. So.
So, I guess that's the purpose is, I think we need to go out on bids on this to just make sure that we're competitive.
Yeah.
And that we're doing our, our, do justice to our citizens on the, the dollars and cents.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, um, okay, roll call, please.
So, so just, so what are you gonna cha-change the, this up a little bit?
How would you like to do that, Adam? I think she could, based on the discussion, just have the octane numbers, I think would be all right.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Shep-. Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
I'll introduce resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-two and move for its adoption.
Yes.
Send it now.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Mark for resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety four two to amend the city of Shatterton Personnel Manual, section. Two point nine, employment of relatives, um, we have. Um, one and a half lines being replaced by a full page.
Yeah.
That's progress.
Right, it is progress. Actually, it makes it more clear as far as what we're trying to do. Um, our community, um, as we hopefully continue, uh, wanting to grow and, and see new opportunities. Our labor force has, has diminished some and this will give us an opportunity in which we will be able to hire these people. And make it clarify a little bit better what we're wanting to do and how we're wanting to do this. Um, this is something that many of the other Panhandle communities have been dealing with. I know we, I've gotten multiple, uh, emails and comments from them. Um, we did base this a lot off of the community of Sydney. Uh, they were the ones that had actually, uh, did something similar back in April of two, twenty-four.
Yep.
Um, and so they were working on it. I know Pat Down and Garian is, is working and, and they've got something in their manual, but this is probably a little more inclusive of what. I'm hoping to see, but although, obviously, we, we want to hear from the council to see what they think and, and to make sure that we're going in the right direction for what the council views are.
Well, as far as the Nebraska State Statute forty-nine dash fourteen ninety-nine dot oh four, this policy kinda follows along that.
That is correct. Mm-hmm. And this is something too, I, I, Adam was the one that actually gave us the final approval to go ahead and present to the.
It takes out an absolute and a diminishing labor pool and, you know, so it's, it's a necessary thing.
Right, well, and it's necessary and like it says, it's, um. Small labor pool or not, it's gonna come up.
Mm-hmm.
And at least now we have some direction whereas it was prohibited. I think it's great. I talked with H R rep, Bev Bartlett. I've talked to you guys in the past. I mean, it's overdue and I'm happy we finally have it here. It's a good, a good update.
Any other comments, questions? If not, have a roll call, please.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Okay, item number, uh, letter R.
R, uh, I'll, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-three, like to move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark for resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-three to declare property a surplus and authorize the same to be sold or discarded. Um, there is a list of items that, that they're planning to get rid of, um. And this.
George could use a sand truck, couldn't you?
Takes care of. Pardon me?
Could use a sand truck, couldn't you?
And I found, is that, does the motor work or is that the one that burned up?
No, it, it runs.
It runs. I don't think I need a sand truck.
And, and this is part of that whole process of what we're wanting to try to do or at least maintain is instead of us accumulating these products for an entire year or two years worth. We're gonna try to look at these kind of things on a quarterly basis. It helps us to keep things clean and we're still gonna be looking at the online auctions that we're doing. We had a very good successful rate on it and we're using the expertise of the auctioneers to tell us whether these items are worthy of going on to the auctions or not. And if they're not, then we can put them all together and maybe get a dollar or two, but if not, then we can dispose of them properly and. Help to keep the clutter and, and everything else down throughout the, the city.
I would love to hear the auctioneer's overview of our typewriters that are being surplus.
Actually, you might be surprised how well some of them might go.
That's, yeah, I was gonna say, that's, all bets are off, but, uh.
Mm-hmm.
So, so if there was a business or a, a community member that actually wanted to donate things to the city to put on the auction, is the city open to that?
I, I would leave that up to the council, but I think we've got enough items to discuss with. If we could just take care of our stuff for a while, I would prefer us do that.
We don't need a rhythm still.
Um, but I, I am gonna stress that not all the items may go on, on a local online auctioneer. Um, I do know that talking to several other, um, agencies or auctions that do some things such as Purple Wave. That sand truck might be a better truck to go out to that thing because they do have heavier equipment, have a little more basis throughout the entire cu- uh, country, especially the Midwest. And so, these are the kind of things that we're trying to explore to get the best, best value back out of our, our pieces of equipment, um. Our stuff is somebody else's treasure, as like we like to say.
Didn't you say Purple Wave is a zero commission for the city?
Zero commission for the, the city. We do not have to do anything other than tell them, this is where the piece of equipment is. You take care of it from there and go from there. So, it's, it is a win-win situation on some of that bigger equipment. But obviously, some of the smaller stuff is just not, not worth it.
Sioux County's made a lot of money out of big iron, sell them, yeah.
We like that big iron too.
I just don't have old stuff over there, do you? No.
Okay. Is there nothing else? Um, carry on, roll call, please.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Like to introduce resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-four, move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Joe for resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-four. It's to place a lien for outstanding utility charges against lot two, block twenty-eight, Western Town Lot Company, second addition to Shatterton. Dawes County, Nebraska, also described as five-ten Bordeaux, um. The outstanding charges are seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and two cents. Um, anyone have any question?
My only question is the dates of the lien specifies September twenty-sixth was the balance date and the agenda, the meeting was October seventh. For the council meeting. Is that gonna be a problem, Adam?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it'll be all right.
Okay.
We'll, uh. It'll be okay.
Good, I'm good with it then.
Okay. Well, you hate to have to do it, but you gotta do it, um, cause we all pay for our bills and the part of the revenue for the. Water and sanitation department are these charges, so. We have a roll call, please.
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Abstain.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the claims as presented in our packet.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Joe to approve the claims, um. I, so one thing that was kinda unusual is the police department and maybe Chief Hickstein could explain there. There was a leak in a, the Durango, one of the Durangos. Um, and the, and they had to replace it and that, very expensive light.
Chief Mayor, Council, uh, Rick Hickstein, represent the Shatterton Police Department located at one twenty-five Main Street. Yes, to your question, Mayor, we are two thousand twenty-one Dodge Durango, the rear taillights go working. On Dodge Durango, it goes all the way across the trunk to the two taillights, well, the middle section of the trunk had a hole in it. And got condensation and water inside, which we were told was not all uncommon to that model of vehicle. As if over a fifteen hundred dollar repair to order it. Now, I would, uh, suspect that everybody would want cops to pull people over for having broken taillights. So, I had to spend fifteen hundred dollars to get that part replaced and I was a little bitter about it. But had to be done.
Yeah.
So.
Did they abandon that, I, that light clear across the back, brake light clear across the back?
They're still there.
Still there, huh?
They're still there, yep, on the makes and models. Every one of our Dodge Durangos has the same all the way across.
Yeah, okay.
Hmm. Cost of doing business, yep.
It s- sounds like to me the, in regard to the people that designed these, well, it seemed like a good idea at the time.
I would agree with you. I agree. These are things that go wrong with newer cars. I mean, it's just one of those things that it's not, it doesn't fall under warrant anymore and we had to pay to replace.
And I also noted, um. The wastewater training, um, was fifty-two hundred and eighty dollars.
Which one are you talking about?
It's the second one, Arrow Mod. Do you, do you know anything?
Right, the Arrow Mod, they actually had a person come out from Arrow Mod to help us out. Um, to, to work through the plant for some of the processes that we have for the treatment process and help us get back into it. This is a gentleman that comes out of Kansas. He's the expert, so we have the additional cost and, and part of his labor to come up here to help us with it. It's something that when we lose some of our main water op- wastewater operators, we need to have that additional training. Plus, it's a refresher for our guys that are there, that have gone through it, that they forgot, whatever else, so. It is something that is gonna happen more and more as we start replacing more of our personnel too.
Yeah, he, he wasn't bashful about his bill.
Absolutely not.
Okay, um. Anyone have any other questions?
I'd say, I guess I, I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, so just like, are some of these more than a monthly bill, like Northwest Road Power, Public Power District? Is that for, uh, twenty thousand?
No, that, that's, that's gonna be a monthly bill, um, your account, I believe the twenty-one nine hundred account was counted for almost thirteen thousand dollars, which is the one for the whale field out there. And that's the one that just zonks you pretty hard with, uh, demand charges, which over half of that is, um, demand charges. And that, I believe, last time I checked was we're getting charged right around twenty-six oh five per kilowatt. Uh, on that, just for the demand charge, not the usage, just the demand charge. And so, if we're getting hit with that, um, that's where the, those costs is, but unfortunately, that is inaccurate number.
Okay.
For that month.
Thank you.
Well.
And we did have the annual fee for Tyler, which is a significant item.
Yeah, and that, that is, that is something that we get incurred every year and that is part of the, the billing process, our payables, our receivables. That is all part of all those, um, systems that we are obliged to keep up in order to stay up with the ter- current, current technology.
Okay, any other questions? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Shepherd?
Yes.
John Drew?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
City manager report.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, real quick, I just wanna remind people, uh, it is getting, starting to get colder. Make sure that they're working on their sprinklers, water lines, anything like that that could, could become fr- potentially frozen. Uh, that, make sure they're unhooked. And the other thing is, the snow will be coming, or it may not be next week, but it will be coming. And if you're gonna be looking for people to help you do the snow removal, now's the time to start talking to the contractors and discussing how you're gonna take care of it. Find out where they are, uh, make sure the contractors know where you wanna have that snow and stuff. And remember, if it's on your property, keep it on your property. That's the biggest thing I'm gonna say. Um, yeah, if it's on the street, don't, yeah, don't, don't put your snow out of your driveway out onto the streets. It's tough enough for our guys to try to go through there multiple times and such and so. I'm just asking the public to help us out as we go on through this whole process, so, um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, we do not need a resolution to excuse the absence of the council members since we're all here. So, uh, council closing comments, we start with Shane, I believe.
Yes, I'd just like to say, uh, I think, uh, Shatterton had a great turnout with, uh. This college homecoming this weekend and, uh, this Sunday music festival, I guess.
Okay.
Um, a lot of people in town, I think everything was full. Um, also wanna remind people of the Firehawk Chili Feed on Friday. And, uh, I believe the Halloween.
Trunketree?
Trunketree.
Trunketree.
Two is c- uh, the twenty fifth, yeah. Um, also wanna let people know that the state, um, okayed, um. Us to turn the water back on at the golf course, so that's a good thing, um, and that's all I had.
Yep. Yeah, I wanna congratulate our Shatterton State Eagles for their homecoming win and thank everyone who participated in the homecoming parade. I always enjoyed attending that and watching the different groups and organizations represent themselves. Uh, congratulate, um, the wrap-up or almost wrap-up of our Shatterton High School volleyball, girls' golf, softball and cross-country. A particular congratulations to the girls' golf for their state showing. And, um, also, the Nebraska State Volunteer Firefighters Association elected our own Scott Schrimer as their president. And I wanna thank Scott for his contributions to our volunteer fire departments and, uh, very proud to see that and, uh, honored to have Scott as our city staff. Thank you.
Okay, um, first thing, Mark, you mentioned people in the community contributing things to an auction. It reminded me when we were doing the, the building, the visitor's center as it was called then, now occupied by the Chamber of Commerce and the. Dawes County, uh, travel board. We had a number of auctions trying to get to the point to match the Peter Keywood Grant. And, and we did that quite a bit, um, Tom Cummings was our, our auctioneer, if, if any of you knew Tom. Um, his fa- favorite joke was two old guys were outside of the post office one day and. One guy says, sure is windy out here. And the other guy says, it's not Wednesday, it's Thursday. First, the other guy says, oh, I'm thirsty too, let's go have a drink. It's an old people's joke.
You'll get it someday.
Um. Just wanted to mention, uh, we'll have another meeting before our ballots are due, but only one day. Uh, with the next meeting to go, uh, so. Uh, with the next meeting to go, uh, so try and get those, um, ballots that you received in the mail. Make sure you take advantage of being able to vote. And then, of course, we have the festivities this Friday in regard to Halloween, kinda the precursor to Halloween. But yeah, Thursday, the thirty first is Halloween, so let's be safe out there.
Everyone took everything I was gonna talk about, so, uh, I guess, uh, vote?